And remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Acceptance of meeting minutes, discussion impossible, action and vote with regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes from the meeting of February fourth, two thousand twenty, to be accepted and approved by the town council. Do you have a motion to accept? Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Martone. Any questions? There being none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number two. Tyler and Lombard Street abandonment petition continuance. Received communication from attorney John V. McGreen, attorney for Countryview Holdings LLC, to ask for a continuance of the petition to abandon portions of Lombard and Tyler Streets that was continued to this date. Dear Madam Clerk, I represent Countryview Holding LLC in connection with its petition to abandoning a portion of Lombard Street and Tyler Street scheduled for hearing before the North Providence Town Council on March third, two thousand twenty. My client requests this matter be continued to the April seventh, two thousand twenty meeting to give Countryview an opportunity to appear before the planning board on this matter prior to appearing before the town council, North Providence Town Council. Sincerely, John V. McGreen. Do you have a motion to continue? Motion's been made by Councilman Martone. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Any questions? There being none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Proposed ordinances. Notice was given of a public hearing on this day whereby the town council would consider passage of the following proposed ordinances. Item number three. Ordinance two zero dash zero zero two. An ordinance amending chapter eleven, article one of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence to add section eleven dash nine entitled, "North Providence Firefighter Cost of Living Adjustment Investment Board." Do you have a motion to pass, Ordinance two zero dash zero zero two? Motion's been made by Councilman Finn McGeady. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Any questions? There being none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number four. Resolution two zero dash zero zero two. An authorization creating the Town of North Providence Firefighter Cost of Living Adjustment Trust Fund. Agreement also attached. Do you have a motion to approve Resolution two zero dash zero zero two? Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Finn McGeady. Any questions? Sir, just come to the microphone. State your name.
Good evening, Mr. President. James Grandy with the North Providence Firefighters Retirement Association. I know this evening is the time they would do it, but when they decide to pick the board, the members for the board, as we had mentioned at the time of the drafting of this ordinance, we have a member of our retirees association who is uniquely qualified to sit on that board as far as financial goes. He runs his own investment firm or whatnot, so if there would be any consideration down the road when they do make their appointments, whether it's from the council's side or the mayor's side, his name is Daniel Legault.
What was his name again?
Daniel Legault. Daniel Legault.
Daniel.
Daniel Legault. L-E-G-U-A-L-T. He's a retired firefighter with the town. And again, at whatever the appropriate time is, a meeting to do that, we'll gladly...
Can you guys send a letter on the record?
Absolutely.
Just requesting that?
To you?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And thank you again for the ordinance.
Okay. A motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number five. Class F liquor license. Town council to consider a vote for the approval of two class F licenses for Mary Mother of Mankind Church for March fourteenth, two thousand twenty, and March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty. Is anyone here from Mary Mother of Mankind? Does anybody have any questions? Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Juicy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman McCullough. There being none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Come enjoy some pasta on the fourteenth and some clam chowder and clam cakes on the twenty-fifth.
Thank you very much.
And we won't charge the kids for the beer.
Thank you, Father. Item number six. North Providence High School Field Surface. Received request from Ruth Bucci to appear before the council for discussion and possible vote on a real grass field for the surface at North Providence High School. State your name, please.
Thank you, President Odiello, and members of the North Providence Town Council. You each have a packet in front of you that I prepared. It has research and quite a bit of documentation that I have been working on for the, about the past six years or so. As you may know, I have been fighting against putting artificial turf into North Providence since about 2014. I've spoken to the council before, as well as other elected officials, and about refurbishing the high school field with real grass. The people of North Providence have in the past signed a petition in favor of natural grass and against artificial turf, which is included in that packet. In my letter to the editor of this week's Breeze, I write about, based on my research, that natural grass is far less expensive than artificial turf to put in, and it's much healthier, and it's better for the environment, and I have enclosed all of that in the packet. With so many negatives associated with artificial turf, I believe that the choice to install artificial turf is not the right choice for us and would be a mistake that would have many negative consequences for the people of North Providence. Although the jury is still out on the safety of artificial turf, we should make the safe choice for the protection of our children and community, and that is natural grass. At one time, we thought that asbestos was safe, and we put it into schools. We know it's not safe. We thought that lead water pipes were fine, but we know that that's not the case. And we thought that it was okay to bury hazardous chemicals along the Wanasker Tucket. I'm just saying a few mistakes that we've made based on thinking it was proper, knowing that there were some hazards involved, but looking at it in a different way. I don't want us to make that mistake with artificial turf. We in North Providence have an opportunity to do the right thing. We can install a cost-efficient natural grass surface. We can ensure that our children have a safe place to play. Now, that will last for many years to come. We can help them to avoid injuries and health problems that are linked to artificial turf. And we can avoid contaminating our field, our air, our land, and our waterways with artificial turf by instead putting in natural grass at the high school. The people of North Providence are benefited by a natural grass field. Its loss would be a great loss to our community. If we are to lose our natural grass field to artificial turf, I'm hoping not, the people should have a say, and that should be on a ballot, because I think it's that important. That's my opinion. I believe that most voters in North Providence would vote for natural grass. In fact, when I did that, when I walked the town and I went to each of the three districts, almost everybody wanted natural grass that I spoke with in the neighborhoods in the three different districts. So I would like to just go through the table of contents, go through the packet just briefly. I know that you can read it at a future date, but I just want to point out a few things, and I hope I won't take too long. All right, number one, if you, it's by number, okay? Number one, I did the Google Earth photo, so you can see the two, the two fields, the two high school fields. The top one, a multipurpose field, and the bottom one, which is a baseball field. I just want to note that at one time, when I was in high school and younger, the bottom field was both a football field and a baseball field. I even played softball on that during the summer recreation program, so we've had a versatile use of these fields in the past. All right, number two. That's my letter to the editor. That was in, that's in this week's Breeze, and it outlines the cost, and about a million and a half for artificial, a million to a million and a half for artificial turf, only two hundred fifty thousand to two hundred thousand for installation of real grass, and that's according to Kingston Turf. Artificial turf gets very, very hot, and natural grass would help drainage, et cetera. And those are just a few facts I put in that, that letter. Number three. This is the heist when I appeared in 2018 before the school committee, and that was after I had met with the then superintendent, the director, Feroli, the then principal, Goho, the athletic director, and we met and we talked about how to fix the field at the high school. And so I've, after that, I appeared before the school committee, so I referenced some of that, so I just, if you, I'm not going to go through everything, because you can read it and it would take forever, but if you go to page, page three, I referenced the meeting, and then I talk about assessing the field, and if you go to the following page, four, it talks about the prices that I was given by the people with whom I spoke. The next page talks about the eight benefits according to Jared Minnick of natural grass. If you turn to number four, Councilman Di Lorenzo had asked me to prepare, this was in 2017, a list of what I had on health effects. So this is just a summary list, and then I added the citations of some of the health effects that have been documented related to artificial turf play, including chemicals, heat-related illnesses, injuries, and infection, and cancer, and release of chemicals into the environment, the air and the water. If you go to five, this is health and human, environment and human health, and this is a group that studied the chemicals in artificial turf, and they came up with ninety-six chemicals. And they have a list of carcinogens, and there are a bunch of them, and then they list irritants, and they are, there are so many there, you can see them. Okay, number, number six. This is the eight benefits of natural grass, where Minnick, who ended up being an expert on, on real grass, and he talks about how, how helpful it is to have natural grass in, in an area, from air quality, not even talking about the students or the athletes who play on the field, but just the air quality, the stormwater management, the better heat, it's not so hot in the area, and he goes through, through the list. Okay, number seven. This was the letter that I had written to Mayor Lombardi. He had asked me to research funding for natural grass, so there is money for natural grass. And I even had talked at that time with the, one of the personnel of the DEM, Rhode Island DEM, who told me that they do not require a particular surface. Whatever the people of the town request in a grant, that's the surface, so natural grass can be requested in, in their grants, and I have a list of some of the potential grants at that time. Okay, number six, this is the petition, I mean, number, number eight. This is the petition that, that I had gone around and I gave you a copy of it, so you, so everybody knows that many, many people had signed this. Okay, number nine is sports turf, and this section tells about natural grass athletic fields and how beneficial they are, and, but it mentions on page three, it mentions the heat that was taken, to just give actual figures on a soccer, a synthetic soccer field...
Can I interrupt you for one second?
I'm sorry?
Why don't we have the council read this over?
I can't hear you.
Why don't we have the council read this over first? There's a lot, I said, there's a lot of information in this package. Why don't we have the council read it over first?
Okay.
So we can digest it, and this, I mean, this is a nice binder, and we appreciate the, the effort you've put in, and...
I know you have to read it, and I know...
And we have to read it and digest it, and a lot of us found out that we were getting this field, you know, we still don't know the particulars. I know, you know, Councilman Amerigia and I discussed it, Councilman Di Lorenzo and I discussed it. We will have a financial say, but as far as the surface of the field, that may be the school department's decision. You know, we still don't know. I, I don't, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand that, President Odiello. I, and we will see what input each of the three, call them branches of our government have on, on how it's to be done, the mayor, the council, and the school committee, and, and I'll find out when that occurs. Let me just, I'll just finish tonight with, if you, just go to nineteen.
I would really like the opportunity to sit down and digest this all.
I'm sorry.
I said, I would really like the opportunity to sit down and digest this whole report.
Okay, I can come back.
But go ahead, as long as you just...
I'll just finish it out with, with something positive, okay? The last page, nineteen. Okay, this is when, of course, I had, my fiftieth high school reunion was last, a couple of years ago, I guess, at this point, and so we went to the high school and we taught it, and that, that, that drawing, that artwork was still there at the high school. It was there when I taught, and so I find it very inspirational. We can do it, Rosie the Riveter, and so I think that, I take that spirit in having a real grass field at the high school. We can do it, and all we need to do is really put our mind to it and our effort to it, and that's, that's what I'm trying to do, and I hope you will too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much.
And now, if you look at this, will you contact me, or...
Well, I think we're going to have a hearing on it, so...
Pardon?
Yeah, I think we're going to have a hearing on it.
Okay.
And I think that's the appropriate time when we will be able to ask the questions, you know, from that, and you will know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven. Speeding issues. Councilman Amerigia requests discussion and possible vote on speeding issues on Birchwood Drive.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the speeding issues on Birchwood Drive has been something that's, just in my four years on the council, has come up. I believe this is the third occasion. Some measures have been taken in the past. There was a temporary speed bump on two separate occasions, which was removed both times, and there was actually a speed limit change about a year and a half ago. The issue is, is where Birchwood Drive connects to Lexington, there's a blind spot going in both directions, and people come flying over that hill. So since we haven't been able to correct that yet, I'm going to take maybe a different approach, and I'd like to make a motion to refer the matter of speeding issues and other safety issues on Birchwood Drive to the Public Safety Committee.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Amerigia. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Finn McGeady. Any questions? There being none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number eight. Entertainment license for seven eight seven restaurant and lounge. Councilman Amerigia requests discussion and possible vote regarding the entertainment license for seven eight seven restaurant and lounge. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this was continued from last month, as you know. There's been some going, some ongoing issues with regards to noise complaints at seven eighty-seven. I've been in constant contact with the police, as well as some of the residents in the area, and I spent between the last two days about three hours sitting with Lieutenant Taverozzi going over some of the statistics. I do believe there's some people from the neighborhood here, maybe if they want to speak first.
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is have anyone that wants to speak come up now from the neighborhood. I don't see, is there anyone here from seven eight seven?
There is not.
There is not, okay. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? Just state your name, just state your name for the record.
How you doing? Edward Lamantia, I live right behind Verdy Street there.
Repeat, repeat your name.
Edward Lamantia, Jr.
Thank you.
Live on Verdy Street. Since they opened up, it was a quiet neighborhood. Ever since they opened up Friday, Saturday nights, it's been grueling, pounding, we, you know, me and Anthony, who owns the building I live in, his parents, both have little babies, mine's five months old, can't even sleep in his own bedroom until after the one o'clock in the morning till they close. And then after they close, of course, there's speeding, there's noise, people, pages in the back parking lot, and I just feel like, I work full-time, go to school full-time, and taking care of a newborn, it's hard enough to get, you know, little sleep as you get, you know, as a new father, so I just would like them to turn it down at appropriate level after eleven o'clock at night. I think that's fair, but I feel it gets louder as the night gets later, so...
Okay.
All right, and I don't know if anybody else wants to speak?
Anthony, did you want to speak?
Yes, please.
Just come to the mic.
Thanks for hearing me. I'll try to make this brief. My name's Antonio Di Cristofaro. My parents own the building. I'm a property manager there, and I also live there, my wife and nearly two-year-old son. I know the, the building owner, great people. I hate to see them not have a tenant. I know they've suffered for a while not having a tenant there. We were all pretty pleased to see that a restaurant was moving in, maybe another place to have takeout. Very, you know, quickly after them coming in, this restaurant and lounge, we realized it's not a lounge, it's a, it's a nightclub. They open at nine o'clock at night, and the music is blaring until after one, one-thirty in the morning. Just like my tenant Ed said, you know, we have young families, we work late hours, I come home at ten o'clock at night after a twelve or fourteen-hour shift, and I'm up to one-thirty in the morning on the couch. You know, this, this has several layers to it. You know, I'm representing not just myself as a tenant, but my neighbors, several, eight families who I spoke with today and knocked on their doors. They all wish they could have been here. Timing was an issue, who had to go to work, who's not feeling well, who's under the weather. They all said they're willing to sign a petition, get involved if they need to. One of the gentlemen I spoke with, he's on the corner of Elena and Verdy Street, young man by the name of Gio. He's actually a combat veteran and requires hearing aids to, to hear. He says at night, even without his hearing aids in, he can't sleep because of the pounding, the bass, the droning of the music. It's, it's not, it's not the, to, to, all right, to back up a little bit, so the four families that I have, I'm one of them. My two first-floor tenants, both of their concerns are, what about the summer months when people's windows are open? As the weather's nicer and people who are leaving the establishment are going to linger longer in the parking lots, revving their engines, motorcycles blaring up and down the road. Like I said, I spoke with several neighbors who all said they have the same issue, they can't sleep at night, their house is vibrating. I'm, I'm, I'm looking for a home, I'm going to be moving out shortly. One of my tenants is looking for a home, that leaves my building fifty percent unoccupied. How am I going to rent to somebody who's, who doesn't, who's going to want to move into a neighborhood with the nightclub? You know, we're a residential area, there's young families, there's elderly in the area. You know, I'm not trying to keep a business from thriving, you know, it's a small town, I want, I want, you know, you know, if you don't spend money in your own neighborhood, move to another one. So, you know, we were trying to be considerate, but I'd like them to be considered as well. I've made several calls to the police department. In the beginning, I tried to stay neutral, but I realized I couldn't, so I've had the police come out a couple occasions, they've had their noise meter, so I asked one of the patrolmen, I said, well, what's an acceptable level and what level are they at now? And he said, well, I took a reading here, and I took a reading there, and I took a reading here, but there's really no, there's really no level of, you know, because of the ambient noise of Mineral Spring Avenue and yada, yada. I said, well, come by every night, seven days in a week at ten o'clock at night, take a reading and have a graph and have a chart, because three nights a week, we can't sleep, four nights we can. So there's obvious an issue. I, I, like I said, I'm not the only one. It's at least eight families who I represent here tonight. Like I said, I can get their names, I can get a petition signed. I didn't want to, but I'll do it if you need me to. So I appreciate you hearing me.
Does anybody have any questions from the councilman?
Yeah, the, the three nights, those Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Thursday, Friday, Saturday. They're open Sundays as well. They open about nine o'clock at night. It is loud, but not as loud. As the crowd gets bigger, the music gets louder. There's a side door, they're on the second, second or third floor. You know, I'm like three, four hundred yards away from the building. I'm laying up in bed one night, and I hear the DJ yelling, "Happy birthday, Aisha." You know, I don't need to know whose birthday it is, it's, it's clear in my bedroom. I've actually had the patrolman step inside the building and close the door, and he said, well, get a sound machine. I said, listen, my kid has a sound machine, we got a Fisher Price elephant playing lullabies all night so he can sleep. Sooner or later, he's not going to be able to sleep to that. My first-floor tenant below us, she's got her radio, her television blaring to compete with the nightclub. I've got my television blaring to compete with the nightclub, just to watch the ten o'clock news. You know, for me, it's really, it's a quality of life issue. Like I said, it has multiple layers. It's a quality of life issue for myself, my family, my tenants, and of course, financial burden that it's going to place on me when my building is fifty percent unoccupied and I'm looking to rent. How do, how do I, you know, get it refilled? Like I said, Sal Esposito and Mike, they're good friends of mine. I've been in, I've been in this town for thirty-seven years, and we've had that building for twenty of them. You know, we tend to be, we try to be good neighbors, and we just want a little consideration. Like I said, I speak for many families being up here tonight, so...
Are they not open the other nights, or are they, are they, it's just not?
I work very sporadic hours. I'm gone for most of the day. My wife's a stay-home, stay-at-home mom right now, so I don't really, she knows to a T when they open, when they close, when their peak hours are, so I can get you any information you need, but I'm not, I'm out of the house a lot.
Looks like we may have...
Answer that question.
It's my understanding that they closed Monday, Tuesday, they tried to open up Wednesday through the rest of the week, because I guess those are the slowest nights.
And, and my other question is, I know you said, I want to make sure that I heard this right, do they not open until nine, or do they not get busy until nine?
Around eight o'clock, the lights come on, and around nine o'clock, the music starts. So that seems, that does not seem like a restaurant to me. One of my neighbors who I knocked on the door, this young lady named Jessica, I believe her mother's here in the, in the, sitting over there, she said she's called before, and she actually had a friend who went there for dinner, and she said the friend could not eat the dinner because people were smoking hookahs next to her and the music was too loud. It wasn't the ambiance that they were expecting for a restaurant. It appears, appears to be a nightclub.
Councilman Di Lorenzo?
What kind of crowds? What kind of, are there a lot of people there on a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Sure, sure.
Is it crowd noise and music noise as well?
As of the time being, with the winter being the way it is, and so cold and frigid out, most of the noise that we're hearing is from the music, from the DJs, we can hear the voices, we can hear the bass from the music. There's a side door that the bus boys will use to bring the trash down to the dumpster. That back, that side door will open up, they'll keep it open for fifteen or twenty minutes, they smoke cigarettes, they call people on their cellphones, they try to bring more crowds in. It's, it's louder when the doors open, it's quiet, but you know, like my tenants are saying, what happens in the summer months when everyone's windows are open, when, when people are lingering in the parking lot? So right now, the crowd isn't an issue. You know, it's a bunch of twenty-somethings and thirty-somethings, and I'm, you know, I'm not a prude, I understand you want to go out and have a good time. This isn't Providence. You know, one night, it was, I leave Coventry at nine at night, I get home about quarter at ten, ten o'clock, I walk the dog. One night, I'm walking the dog, I hear a diesel engine coming down the truck, down my street, ten-thirty at night. I look, it's a forty-foot Buzz Bus. It's a school bus altered with black lights and strobe lights, it's painted purple, it says Buzz Bus, and they're doing laps down Verdy Street, up Elena, up Mineral Spring, around the Oakies Building, and they're picking up intoxicated, you know, people. So I'm thinking, first of all, why is there a bus driving around in laps? How many intoxicated people require a bus? And how many intoxicated people are not taking the bus and driving home? One night, there was some fair weather last week, there was a half a dozen motorcycles out there, they're revving the engines, they're driving up and down, they're racing up and down the streets. Like I said, this is a residential property, we're a bunch of small, growing families. You know, it's a quality of life issue, we're not trying to, you know, infringe on anybody's ability to run a business and make money and be lucrative. That's what this town needs, but you know, it's, it's a residential area. I got the Coletti Farm behind us, it's going to be a recreational area soon. School will be out, kids will be in the neighborhood, kids are going to be playing baseball and soccer, you know, concessions will be happening. I, I just don't think this is the right environment for that type of business. And like I said, I've had several neighbors have the exact same reaction. You know, thank you for hearing us out, I hope we could come to a resolution. I, you know, I'd love to give them an opportunity to, to maybe clean up their act and, and run a fair business. I've tried calling them, they don't answer their phone.
It's too loud, they can't hear.
They don't, they don't make themselves available, so...
Councilman?
Yeah, so, as, as, have things gotten, in the last month, have things gotten worse?
Yes. Yeah, it hasn't gotten better.
Okay.
You know, um, I actually feel like they, they, maybe it's just an interpretation or something, but I think they know the end is coming, so they're trying to, uh, you know, get every last bit of it.
You know, a, a couple of times, um, the police came, um, they brought, uh, one manager came over. His name was Anthony. He said, "If you have a problem, just call with lower music." I said, "Shouldn't have to." I said, "Try to slow the music." He said, "Well, you call, tell them to lower it." I said, "You can't, you can't, you can't answer the phone." I tried that, so... And then on a night, they had a young lady, I don't know who it was, maybe the owner, came downstairs in front of our neighbor's house, uh, Bobby. Um, and they, she got on her phone, and she must have told him to lower it. They lowered the music, and the cops stepped off, right back, back again. Um, I mean, you're already, the cops have been called once. Low, I mean, lower to an acceptable level, and there's no problem.
Anybody have any other questions?
Most, the entertainment, it's mostly the DJ and the music. There's no live bands or any of that stuff in there, is there?
Not that. I, I've never been in there, but it sounds like there's a live DJ who's, uh, you know.
Okay.
Just musical, I don't see whatever they're doing.
Okay.
Right, and that guy Anthony, the manager, I don't know who he was, but he said he was the manager. He said, "It's, they eat dinner during the day, and just every time the lights go down, they bring out the hookahs and make tables up, and their music starts," so. I haven't been in there either, so I don't really know the layout. I mean, we just wanted to get some peace and quiet. The neighbors, they used to be quiet and was in, and grateful with us.
And this is the most updated police, uh, call log? I see. No?
So, uh, one-
Councilman, explain, I want Councilman Maton to explain, they can, why they can or cannot have hookahs. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I know you understand this, this law.
Yeah, uh, so in order for a business-
'Cause we never approved a hookah.
No. Yeah.
In order to have, uh, smoking there, fifty-one percent of their income has to be from tobacco and smoking products.
Yes, so there's a-
Forty-nine percent has to be from alcohol.
There's a Healthy Workplace Safety Act which only permits smoking in a smoking bar. In order to qualify as a smoking bar, fifty-one percent of your sales have to come from the sale of tobacco. Uh, you, food and incident, uh, food and drinks should be incidental to the other facets of your business. And, and the third thing, um, is that, uh, you have to have a smoke filtration system that prevents the permeation of smoke outside the building. So, um, now, I will say that, that's, that's from the state. Um, the, the, the towns are a little bit limited with regard to what they can do about that. That's, that's really a state issue. I mean, I think what we can, what we could ask is them to provide us with, uh, the proof that they have certified, because, uh, in order to certify the fifty-one percent, you have to fill out an affidavit with Division of Taxation. So, we could ask them for those affidavits just to provide to us. We could also ask them for, for proof, uh, whether that be by receipts or by pictures of what smoke filtration system they have in the building.
Okay. You wanna make a motion for that, Mario?
I have a few different motions.
Yeah, I think we all-
I'm happy to make that motion first.
Let's get back to Councilman Am-
But I've spent, you know, three hours with the police, and I wanna explain what they recommend. No, but I, I'd say make that motion now, since we're on the topic.
So, I, I would request that, uh, for the next council meeting, that, uh, seven-eight-seven appear with, uh, proof of those affidavits, as well as proof, um, proof that they feel will be sufficient enough for the council to feel confident they have the correct smoke filtration system.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Maton, second by Councilman Famigetti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
The ayes have it. Councilman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, if I may, Lieutenant Taverozzi wasn't able to be here tonight, but he asked me to convey to you, you all, um, what was, been discussed over the last forty-eight hours. So, uh, I'll be, what, his plan is, is as follows. Um, he was going to recommend, if he was here tonight, uh, that we continue this, the entertainment issue, entertainment license issue, for two months. In the meantime, as of this week, they, the North Providence Police would provide, um, ownership and management at seven-eight-seven with a copy of the noise ordinance, an explanation as to what, and what is not acceptable. They're gonna do three runs daily, one during the daytime shift, one from the four to twelve, one from the midnight to eight. They'll take readings at all three. They'll take proper readings. The readings are supposed to be done for fifteen minutes at a time, per federal standards. And they're gonna take those readings. In the event that there is excessive issues, we have the power as a body to, to summon them in, a, at a special meeting. Um, but what he would like to see them do in the meantime also is, and I always say "he," I mean the whole police department, obviously, is to take additional, uh, measures to reduce the sound, such as soundproofing, trying to move the speaker system to see if that has any help, and to set a volume, once it's determined what's acceptable per our own ordinance, to set the level at that consistently from open to close. No variations, 'cause that's the issue I think that you're all seeing, is that there's spikes in volumes on certain days and certain times. Um, he wants to lay that all out in writing to them, and essentially, I mean, I hate to put it this way, but this be their last chance, that if you do not comply with these certain things, the town council will and most likely take, uh, measures to pull your entertainment license. That would have been his suggestion. Obviously, we can, as a body, discuss it, but, um, he's also, by the way, and, and you're all privy to this information, he's gonna put together a report for the council with the most up-to-date, um, police logs as, in what the result of every single call was. And, um, there's, it's not just entertainment issues. There, there's issues with sometimes people staying late there. I think that's where, when you're hearing some of the music, so, um, I think there's a lot we need to see.
Perfect.
Mr. President, if I-
Councilman?
If I can, um, just a couple points. Um, Kenny, I know you were saying you'd like it to be extended for two months. I think with Mario's motion, they're probably gonna come back here anyway, next month anyway. And to be honest with you, I'd rather them come back next month. That way, they realize that this is a serious issue. You know, the council and the mayor's office were pro-business, and that's something that we actually pride ourselves on. But, at the same time, we try to find the balance between bu- business and residential. And, you know, the more and more I hear about this issue and then the hookah and everything, I'm offended, because when they came before the council and asked for the entertainment license, a couple of the questions that we were asking is, is this a nightclub? Is this Providence coming into North Providence? And we were told, "No, this is a restaurant." So, I am a little offended that this is happening. So, I would like to see them come back next month.
And if I may, Mr. President, I tend to agree, and I'm, I'm even more personally offended, because we sat, and, and Mr. Lamentia knows this, we sat with the owner of the restaurant, Lieutenant Taverozzi, Captain Brady, and myself, and everything she told us has since then turned out maybe not to be true. And in fact, there's a growing sense among the law enforcement community that they're actually acting spitefully, doing exactly what they said, turning the music volume louder after the police leave their details. Uh, so, you know, it's trending in the wrong direction, and I, and I agree with, with Councilman Famigetti. Next, I mean, I'd have him here next month or sooner, if we decide to, to hail them sooner.
Okay, does anybody wanna make a motion then?
Uh, I guess I would like to make a motion to continue the entertainment license hearing to next month, um, pending North Providence Police's recommendations, and, well, I'll leave that at that.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Amorigi. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Famigetti. Any questions?
I, I, the, the only other thing I, I would request is that when the police are doing these checks, they could also make note of when the, the establishment is open. Uh, one, one thing that I'm very concerned about is if, if the establishment, and again, I, I know you're not there, but if the establishment is not opening until nine o'clock, I think that's a, I think that's a clear material misrepresentation that they, they made to us on the record.
They're not serving food, that's for sure.
Yeah, that, that's, I, I'm, I'm very concerned about that. So, I would like to know if they're, they're actually open at four, five o'clock for dinner, which is what I expected that they would be doing.
And the other thing, the other thing was, they made the statement that, uh, there's no, um, set when they put the meter on at the sound.
That was one of my issues. Thank you for bringing that up.
And there is, and there is, there is a set, because I went through that.
Yeah, he gave that to-
I went through that, so, maybe, maybe we, so we should send a letter to the police department and inform them that there is a-
Well, we, we determined that today when we were meeting, and that's, that's the same ordinance we're gonna provide to, to the restaurant and say this is the standard. What they'd like to do is take a reading during, um, period of time where the restaurant's closed, so they can get an ambient reading from Mineral Spring, and then start taking the readings. And if they're over that threshold, they're gonna cite them immediately. They're not gonna just let this build up for thirty days. I mean, that's what they told me would, would be their approach, but.
Councilman?
Thank you. Uh, has anyone talked to the owner of the property? Not, not this owner. I'm talking about the owner of, come, come right up, sir, please.
Hi, I'm Bob D. Donato. So, I came up here. I was the only one that showed up last time.
Well, Bob D. Donato.
D. Donato. So, fifty-five, fifty-four years at my house. I've lived there my entire life. Ken, I came here last time when they applied for the license, okay, and I shook that woman's hand when she said that that music would stop at twelve forty-five, and that she would have security there. There is no security. There are people urinating all over that parking lot. My house is the most direct house, directly in back. You know, you know where I live, all right? And I s- I can't help but see these people, 'cause my picture window is right there, right? As Anthony mentioned earlier with the bus, it's, they hang around till one, past one sometimes, depending on the night. Music doesn't really start heavy until after ten, okay? So, it's ten o'clock, on the nose, boom, and then it'll just go till one o'clock, all right? Sometimes a little thereafter, um, but it has been disruptive. It is loud. Um, and it's Friday and Saturday primarily, all right? Monday through Thursday, you don't hear much, but Friday and Saturday, it is a nightclub. That is what it is. It's turned into a nightclub. That's exactly what it is. So, you have, and you asked the question earlier, I, I believe, um, what type of crowd is it? It's all the young crowd. Ten o'clock, all the young people come, and it's a party. It's a nightclub. So, that's, that's what we're up against. And what are we gonna be dealing with when the summer comes and we wanna open our windows? You're not gonna be able to, I mean, this is wintertime. Wintertime right now, and all you hear is a heavy bass, thump, 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 thump. That's all you hear. All night until one o'clock in the morning. Nonstop. It doesn't stop. And the cops are down. I seen two cops, right, down at the end of the road the last couple nights. They're down at the corner of Elena and Verdi. You're not gonna hear it. Get on the top right there, right at the top, right where they come out the side, which is what Anthony mentioned earlier, and they go out there and they smoke their cigarettes, and the bellhops are out there doing their thing, and the music is horrible, because they leave the door open, all right? And I've watched this, all right? And, uh, i- it, it's just a terrible ongoing thing, and it hasn't gotten better. It's only getting worse. I tried to talk to Sal. Sal is a very close friend of mine. Sal and Michael. Sal's sick right now, all right? But I tried to talk to both of them, all right? There's nothing they can do. It's not there. I mean, they're renting. They're trying to make a business. They're renting out the place. I'm happy for them. There was never a problem when there was a restaurant. When it was Okies, when it was a place thereafter, was never a problem, okay? They had music. You couldn't hear it. It wasn't a problem. This place is a nightclub, and that's what they turned it into. They put a twelve-thousand-dollar system up there, right, with no sound attenuation, 'cause you have nothing up there. That thing hasn't been refurbished in I don't know how long. I don't know if any one of you have gone in there. There is no sound attenuation, all right?
So, so glass windows too?
Absolutely. Windows, the whole works, never been replaced, right? So, you're not gonna stop it. That dumping is just gonna keep going, and lowering it, that ain't gonna help, 'cause it's just a bass, and it's a sound transmission that goes up high. I'm in the business, so I have. Right, so, um, I have talked to Sal, but I can't put this on here. It's not. I, I, to a certain degree, and I understand, he, he talks to them, but this is these people.
No, not to cut you off, Paul. There's other tenants in the building who I meant to reach out to. There's a place on the fourth floor. I forget the name of it, but they do art and, and wine, and you go in, and I, I've almost wanted to give them a call and say, "Does this disrupt anything that you do and try to, you know, have a, a regular business? You have, you have a, you know, a group or dozen people that come over here. They wanna have a nice night, have a glass of wine, make a painting, and they, and they've gotta deal with that all night." I, I'm sure they're gonna be looking, I, I don't wanna make a, either way, I'd like to reach out to them, because I'm sure they're looking for another place to rent, and that's gonna leave another vacancy in, in, in Sal's building as well, so.
I think I could speak from experience and, and say this matter will probably be resolved within the next month. And, and I'm only saying that because I've, I've been up here long enough, and a couple of us have, where we've seen these matters before, and, uh, I don't think we'll give them too much of a leash.
I appreciate everybody hearing us, and, like I said, I've got, I've got a list of names of all the neighbors who said that they're willing to sign something, an order, a, an authority.
Not necessary.
Yeah.
Not, not necessary.
Um, this gentleman's name is Gio Shani of La Raza. Uh, he is Puerto Rican. He said, "This is a Puerto Rican nightclub," and it offends me. He said, "My wife and I moved out of Tuckit to get away from things like this." He said, "I have a young child. He's a little younger than my son, uh, you know, sixteen months or so." He said, "Right now, he's sleeping through the night. Sooner or later, he won't. This summer, I'm gonna wanna have cookouts, have family over, and I gotta deal, you know, I, like I said, I get, I get off the highway. I get up at one forty-six at ten o'clock at night, and when I think, when I take that left onto Elena Street, the front lot is full, the back lot is full. People are running across the streets, that, you know, that, you know, scrambling around, and, you know, as soon as I get off the highway, I hear it, so. Um, like I said, for myself, my neighbors, it's a quality of life issue as well, so, like I said."
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out.
Can I just ask one more question?
Go ahead.
The, the Buzz Bus, how, how often do you see that?
The what?
The bus.
The bus?
I've seen it twice.
I've only seen it one instance, but like I said, I work on a bus.
Twice, one on top, once on top, because I can see I'm on the second level. Once it was on the top, and then another time, different night, it was on the bottom. And they bring DJs in. They bring special DJs in. That's what they do, all right? And all these people follow this particular DJ, all right?
Yep.
That's what they're called.
Steve, you have, the Councilman De Lorenzo, do you have a question?
No.
Oh. Everyone all set?
Thank you for listening.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, we can make one more motion, just to have our clerk send a letter to seven-eight-seven to advise them of the next council meeting and ask their, uh, for their attendance.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman McCullough. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, item number eight, Obed Avenue Parking. Councilman Amorigi requests discussion and possible vote regarding the parking on the east early side of Obed Avenue. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the, there was, there has been, there has been parking issues on the end part, or end portion of Obed Ave. Um, a couple residents reached out to us a few years ago. We were able to make one side resident parking only for them. Uh, just recently, a new family has moved in. They're parking not only on that side, but on both sides. And from what I understand from the police, there, there's been, uh, public safety personnel who have not been able to get through. Um, long story short, the people from Obed who, who are trying to petition us to make both sides resident-only parking, were not able to be here tonight for various reasons, but this is something that would have to go to ordinance anyways. Uh, so I'd like to make a motion to, um, refer this matter to ordinance for recommendation with regards to extending the no-parking on Obed Ave.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Amorigi. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Famigetti. Any questions? Maybe none of those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number ten, Memorial Bench. Councilman Amorigi requests discussion and possible vote regarding the installation of a memorial bench at Stephen Only Park.
Uh, so, upon the passing of, uh, Alan Garzone, who was a longtime tennis coach at the high school, uh, some of his former players reached out to me, and, um, I guess they're starting a fundraiser to buy a memorial bench, and they just wanted to ask for the town council's, uh, blessing or support to put it on, on some town property. Stephen Only was just one of the places they had mentioned. Unfortunately, likewise, due to everybody being ill, uh, they weren't able to be here tonight, and they asked if, uh, this matter could be continued to next month's meeting.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Amorigi. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Famigetti. Councilman De Lorenzo, you have a question?
Uh, I, I don't know, Mr. Garzone. I know you spoke very highly of him. Uh, he's a high school teacher?
He was, the high, yeah.
Did you not, did something at the high school?
Yeah.
That sounds like the best place for it, right? Something at the high school.
Hey, something in his name would be, would be great, 'cause he was, he was just-
Because the tennis courts were-
I was gonna say that.
Tennis courts were on Stephen Only, so he was a tennis coach, so they probably wanna, you know.
Okay, a motion's been made. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number eleven, resignation letter received. Letter of resignation to be accepted with regret from Diane Wrench Mooney from the North Providence Library Board. To the Honorable Town Council, hello. It is with regret. I submit my resignation to the North Providence Union Free Public Library Board of Directors. I have served for some forty-five years as a board member, and I have enjoyed my years there, but because of health reasons, I must resign my tenure. Sincerely yours, Diane Wrench Mooney. Do I have a se- a motion to accept with regret? Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Amorigi. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twelve, Board Appointments. Town Council discussion and possible vo- vote with regard to the appointments to be made to the following boards. Due to the res- resignations of members in the previous agenda item. One Planning Board, two mayoral appointments. Dear Mr. President and Honorable Council Members, I respectfully submit the following names as a can- as candidates for an appointment to the North Providence Planning Board. One, Nancy G. Cerabian, thirty-six Marlborough Head Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, and Justin Conrad, seventeen South Brookside Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Do I have a motion to approve Nancy G. Cerabian and Justin Conrad?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Maton. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed, the ayes have it. Zoning Board Minority Alternate. Okay, this letter is from Gary Arnold, dear Mary Ann, hope all is well with you, Mary Ann. It's been a while since we have talked. I would like to submit my recommendations for Debbie Gonzalez-Cabalar for minority position for the North Providence zoning board. She's a dedicated North Providence resident and will serve our town with pride. Debbie's contact information is as follows. Do I have a motion to appoint Debbie Gonzalez-Cabalar?
So moved, and Debbie's here tonight in the back, if you wanna wave, say hello.
Motion's been made by Councilman Amorigi, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Famigetti, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Historic District Commission, the... From Ruth Bucci. Hi Dino, Tom Green recommends George Rocco for the open alter, alternate position on the Historic District Commission. I have attached Tom's email to George Rocco and George's resume for your consideration. Talk to you soon, Ruth. Do I have a motion to appoint George Rocco to the Historic District Commission? Motion's been made by Councilman Juasty, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bacala, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. And the Land Trust. Okay, there is two mayoral appointments and one council appointment. Cheryl Hodgson, ninety-nine Nipmunk Trail, Ken Scotty, twenty-three Riverview Drive, and Carleen Hughes, eleven Cherry Street. Do I have a motion to appoint Cheryl Hodgson, Ken Scotty, and Carleen Hughes?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, is there a second? Second by Councilman Matone, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number thirteen, Claims Submitted. Town Council Discussion and Possible Vote with regard to the claims received from the following. Sean Conder, Two Colonial Drive, North Providence. Raul Martinez, eighteen Born Avenue, North Providence. Dennis Notar Giacomo, Eight Oliver Street, North Providence. Do I have a motion to refer these to the Claims Committee? Motion's been made by Councilman DeLorenzo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bacala, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number fourteen, Claims Committee Report. Town Council Discussion and Possible Vote with regard to the Claims Committee Report to be presented by Councilman Juasty. Councilman?
We had three, uh, three claims. The first one was for Sean Conder. Uh, he was tagged and towed for, uh, parking during a snowstorm, and we never put a ban on the street, so he should never have been tagged or towed. The police have taken the tags off, and, uh, so we're gonna reimburse him a hundred and fifty dollars for being towed.
Which one is that, meaning his son?
Sean Conder.
So it's a hundred and fifty?
Hundred and fifty dollars, one. The next one is Dennis Notar Giacomo, for twenty-two hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-seven cents. He lives at Eight Oliver Street. He, uh, he had a sewer backup, and, uh, this is, uh, the cost that he's submitted, to clean the basement up in his house, so, and I checked, and the, we did have a sewer backup, so, um, recommend, we, we recommended that we pay the twenty-two hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Twenty-two sixty, thirty-seven.
Yep. The next one is Raul Martinez, uh, this is at eighteen Born. This was another sewer backup. Uh, this was for cleanup, the ServPro to come in and just clean up the sewage out of his, out of the basement, and that was for thirty-five hundred and fifty dollars. And, recommendation was to pay it. And that's it.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept, it's presented from Councilman Juasty?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Famigetti, any questions? Maybe none, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number fifteen, Finance Committee Report. Town Council Discussion and Possible Vote with regard to the Finance Committee Report to be presented by Councilman Amorigi. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the Finance Committee met last Wednesday, February twenty-sixth. Present was the entire committee, along with Councilman Stephen DeLorenzo, uh, Bill DePalma from Compass IT Solutions, and, uh, our own Shane Pichet. Uh, we had a very enlightening conversation. Uh, Shane was, was kind enough to provide us with quite a bit of information from not only this town, but surrounding towns, I'm not gonna read it all to you, it's in the report. Um, but the bottom line, uh, or the end result was that I think we all agree that perhaps something can and should be done with tangible taxation, uh, but there's a lot of work to be done in order to figure out if it's fiscally responsible to do so. Um, so a motion was made that the committee would continue that item to next month's Finance Committee meeting, uh, so that the Finance Committee could gather more information as far as revenue as it relates to tangible taxes and/or exemptions in tangible taxes, and that motion passed unanimously. Uh, the other issue on our agenda was the hiring, uh, or going out to bid to hire an engineer to do a traffic and structural study of the village of Senedale. Uh, and after hearing from Shane again, and also reading the original RFP, um, that was formed last March, uh, a motion was made by Councilman Familari and seconded by Matone, voted unanimously, and that motion was that we recommend to the council, uh, that we send correspondence to the town's purchasing agent, asking him to go out to bid to hire an engineer to do a traffic and infrastructure study in and around the village of Senedale, and for him to use the March twenty-nine RFP for the bid purpose, if possible.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the Finance Committee Report?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Matone, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number sixteen, Tax Addendas. Town Council Discussion and Possible Vote with regard to the list of tax addenda received from tax assessor in the amount of one thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-one cents for motor vehicles. Do I, do I have a motion to approve? Motion been made by Councilman Juasty, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Matone, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number seventeen, Tax Abatements Under a Thousand. Town Council Discussion in Action. Possible vote for the approval of the list of tax abatements under one thousand received from the tax assessor in the amount of six hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-seven cents for real estate, two thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents for motor vehicles, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-one cents for tangibles. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Juasty, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Amorigi, all those in favor? Aye, all those opposed, the ayes have it. And, uh, item number eighteen, Tax Abatements Over a Thousand. Town Council Discussion in Action. Vote for the approval of the list of tax abatements over a thousand received from the tax assessor in the amount of five thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents for real estate. Do I have a motion to abate? I mean, sent to the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Amorigi, is there a second?[1787.43]